Planning Commission meeting. July nineteenth. Meeting called order.
Please stand, put your hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
Stands my nation under God into this world.
Thank you.
Your role call.
Commissioner Arribas.
Present.
Commissioner Morio. Absent Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca. It's absent. Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Present.
And just a note to the commission is Commissioner Morio and alternate Commissioner Fonseca had provided prior notice that he wouldn't be able to attend today.
Approval of the agenda.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Your role call.
Commissioner Arribas.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. At this time, the commission may announce any item being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request moving of the item on the agenda. You know, motion or approval? We just did. Oh, okay. Approval of the minutes, planning commission meeting. July fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I like to motion approve the minutes for me on July fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
First, second Commissioner Arribas.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Next item, written communication. I mean, written communication.
None from staff.
Okay. Next item, public, public comment, non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item. On any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but within the subject matter section within thereof, please let me your comments to three minutes.
So anyone on the line?
Anybody on the line?
There's anybody online, please raise your hand to make a public comment. There are none.
Okay, go on to the next item, reports and requests. I think we got somebody. Oh, we do have somebody. Open up the public comment.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Alex, the interpreter. I was assigned. Somehow I'm not assigned anymore as an interpreter. Would you be able to please assign me again?
Sure, please.
Thank you very much.
But open up a public comment, six ten. Oh, there isn't one. Okay, closing public comment, six ten. Reports and requests, moving on to next item, reports and requests.
None from staff, chair.
Non-hearing items. Public hearing calendar, question additional, City of Coachella, six-cycle housing element, general plan amendment number twenty-one zero-two, and environmental assessment number twenty zero-three for consideration. City Coachella six-cycle housing element for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine. City initiative.
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission, Gabriel Perez, here, development service director. So this item is a pretty significant item for the city. As I've gone over the general plan for the city in the past, that's our vision for the future of the city. And there are some required elements that the state does require that to have. One of those elements is a housing element, right? So how we're going to plan for housing for the next eight years, right, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine? And so all cities have to do this. And we have to be able to plan for a certain number of housing units. We have to have the policies in place to be able to do that. And all of that has to be approved and certified by the state. So we've prepared that document. We worked with consultant Lisa Wise Consulting. We've been working closely with Catherine Slama from that firm, and they've been diligently helping us out to prepare that housing element. She'll go over it. There's been a large community outreach process that's been part of this, which informs what's in the housing element. And obviously, there are required sections that need to be included that Catherine will be able to go over. So I'll pass it over to Catherine. She has a presentation that she will share remotely.
Thank you, Director Perez. My name is Catherine Slama. I'm a director at LWC. Good evening, commissioners. It's great to be here with you virtually tonight. I have to apologize. There is quite an echo, so I'm going to do my best to run through this presentation for you tonight. That's, that's much better. I hope that everyone can still hear. Okay. Let me pull this up. Okay, thank you, commissioners, chair vice chair, members of the commission. As I said, my name is Catherine Slama, director at LWC. I've been the project manager on the City of Coachella six-cycle housing element. There is a lot of information in the staff report in front of you, so I will keep it focused on the important components that are in front of you for consideration tonight. We'll go through some housing element basics for any commissioners and members of the public who want to cover this, go through the project process, and then highlight some key components of the housing element for you tonight, and then talk a little bit more about next steps. So just going back a little bit to basics, again, a lot of this is covered in the staff report. But I just want to emphasize that the housing element is a required component of the city's general plan, and this is one of the seven mandatory elements of the city's general plan, and it is the most highly regulated by the state of California and the California Department of Housing and Community Development. We often call it HCD. HCD reviews every city's housing element in the entire state for compliance with a very strict set of legal legal measures and process requirements. But it is also a really great opportunity for cities like Coachella and across the state to think on a more regular basis about the city's housing needs as well as opportunities to assess and plan and strategize about how to meet those needs on a recurring basis. The main component often of a housing element is what we call RENA, R H N A, the regional housing needs allocation. This is the amount of housing that the City of Coachella is required to plan for over the next eight-year period, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine. This is the years, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine. It is a number that is out of the hands of the City of Coachella. It's a number that comes from the state through the Association of Governments for Coachella, that is SCAG. And through SCAG, it comes down to each of the cities in the SCAG region. There's a hundred and ninety-seven cities that belong to the SCAG-associated governments, and the state through SCAG determines the allocation of the number of units that the City of Coachella must accommodate over the next eight-year period. The City of Coachella's six-cycle RENA, R H N A, is just about a thousand units more than it was in the previous cycle. But there is, if you can see here on the slide and the table and some of the bold text, it may be more units overall than previously, but there is less reliance on affordable housing than in previous years. So the split is about fifty-seven percent above moderate income and about forty-three percent below market rate housing allocation. And again, this is the amount of units that the city must plan to accommodate and have land and zoning resources available to support, but the city is not obligated, excuse me, the city is not obligated to construct or build any of this housing. There are certain things, as required by law, that must be in every housing element. The staff report goes through all of this and a lot of these sections in a little bit more detail. But the city of Coachella and all cities across the state of California must go through and evaluate past performance and how they've how they've been performing against their own housing goals over the past past cycle, which would have been the fifth cycle. And the City of Coachella has done quite well. There's been a lot of housing developments and affordable housing projects in the city, and the staff report goes into a little bit more detail about those. Housing needs assessment as a way to think about who lives in Coachella now and what might their particular housing needs be. There are different needs for different types of populations, whether those be persons with special needs or households of various incomes, all have a variety of needs. So the housing element thinks about the needs of all of the different components of the population of the City of Coachella. The sites inventory is a way to demonstrate to the state of California that the city has adequate land resources to meet that housing target, that RENA, that R H N A number. The housing resources assessment is a way to understand all of the funding and resources available for the City of Coachella to help promote housing development and also fund implementation programs. This housing constraints assessment is a way for the city to think about what they have, what the city has under their control that may be an impediment to housing as well as other things that are outside of the city's control, like the market forces and the environment as a whole, which also may be a constraint to housing development, and to think about how the city may be able to proactively remedy and solve some of those constraints that are identified. And then lastly, the implementation plan, this along with the sites inventory are the key pieces of a housing element. The implementation plan are the City of Coachella's housing-related goals, policies, and programs to guide decision-making and staff actions over the next eight years to achieve housing-related goals. The six cycle is a more complex process for those on the commission and the public who have been involved in housing elements in previous years. The six cycle is much more complex than it's in previous years. There are higher RENA targets. As you can see, Coachella has almost eleven hundred more units to accommodate than in previous years. But there are also a lot of other more technical and regulatory requirements this cycle that have made it challenging for cities across the state to comply with housing element law. This is in part why of the almost two hundred cities in SCAG, there were maybe a handful, less than half a dozen, that met the statutory requirement for adoption in October of two thousand twenty-one. Even as, as of today, checking HCD's website, almost half of SCAG jurisdictions are still out of compliance with housing element. Because there are so many new laws, it's really moving, it's a moving target of trying to find compliance with state law as they continue to issue new laws, pass new bills that in the state legislature, as well as issue newer interpretations about how to comply with new state law. So a little bit about housing element process. So as mentioned before, the new requirements of this six cycle have made it a little bit of a moving target and has extended the process for most jurisdictions throughout California. And it has taken a little bit longer to go through the housing element cycle because there is more review periods needed, and the extent of those review timelines has also changed. So the project kicked off just at the end of two thousand twenty, and the majority of the public outreach occurred during the development of that first draft in two thousand twenty-one. Since the public review draft was initially released in two thousand twenty-one, the city has undergone two more HCD review cycles and issued two additional drafts, one in October of two thousand twenty-two, and then one in most recently in June, two thousand twenty-three. And this does not count all the countless coordination that went into consulting with staff, consulting with the Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as all of the work that was happening with the community. As Director Perez mentioned at the beginning of this, there's extensive amount of outreach that occurred on this project. There is a webpage that contains all of this information, and it is recent as of today. It's been updated throughout the project with meeting information, opportunities for engagement, and all documents and communication with HCD, and any revised draft has been posted on the, on the website. There have been focus group meetings, steering committee meetings, an online survey, public workshop, and then meetings with the planning commission as well as the council. The last time we were in front of the planning commission and council was in November of two thousand twenty-one. And since then, staff and the consultant team have worked tirelessly with HCD through the multiple review processes to continue to revise the element, impose the revisions of the element publicly to show demonstration and compliance with state law. So this six-cycle housing element, so the city has met a lot with HCD. Oh, one, one last thing I wanted to say, apologies first before we move on to the element. The element in front of you tonight has gone through extensive, extensive coordination with HCD, and the element that is in front of you tonight, staff is confident is compliant with state law. It had, we've had several meetings with the state, and they reviewed the interim revisions and the document that is up for the planning commission's consideration tonight. So given the added scrutiny the six cycle has on the sites inventory, the city spent a lot of time with the state and internally identifying and vetting and justifying the sites that are in the sites inventory to demonstrate compliance and enough land resources or just land in the city that's available to accommodate the RENA, that housing need number at all of the income levels. One component of this was making sure that the sites were really going to have the opportunity to accommodate housing over the next eight years. So rather than picking sites that were really not likely to develop, the city and the consultant teams spent a lot of time doing a lot of site-by-site analysis, analysis of the, of the land resources, and this included making sure that all of the sites were located without environmental constraints and had access and were currently served by water and sewer infrastructure. This is an important component of the sites inventory because we know that extensions for water and sewer can be quite expensive. So identifying sites that have access and are currently within the city's infrastructure network really increases the likelihood of developing housing on certain sites. So this is the resulting sites inventory of all of the work that was done. So this is the resulting sites inventory of all of the work that was done. And I really want to focus on this second scenario because this is what the city is relying on to demonstrate to the state of California that there is adequate land resources to accommodate the housing need at all income levels. And it is the general plan scenario because this is what the city, the city's general plan says in terms of land designations and densities and uses. And this is a scenario that shows that under the city's general plan, which is more recent than the prior zoning, the zoning ordinance, there's plenty of land available to accommodate over ten thousand units of, of housing at all income levels. The numbers in this table, anything that's green and shows as a negative is actually a surplus. So you can see the R H N A allocation at the very, very top across all income levels to total that seven hundred eight six, seven thousand eight six seven number. And under the general plan scenario, the land as planned for in the general plan, there's capacity for over ten thousand units, which is over three thousand unit surplus over what the state would have wanted to see. The map, this is a map of the distribution of units across income categories. And there are three income categories. Everything that's in green are sites that are suitable for above moderate income households based on a lot of characteristics, including density and the site size. Blue is the sites that could accommodate lower income housing. The lower income housing goes under a bigger microscope in front of HCD. They spent a lot more time scrutinizing the suitability of sites for low income housing. So there are a lot of checklists that the city had to do to make sure that sites that were identified for low income housing actually are, are suitable under the state's eyes. And then the sites that are kind of this yellow gold color, maybe suitable for some, for this moderate in between income level households. Another main focus of the state's review of the city's housing element was compliance with AB six eight six, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing. This bill requires that cities analyze compliance with fair housing laws, assess the city's geography with respect to socioeconomic factors as well as the distribution of persons in protected classes by race, ethnicity, age, income, disability. And the city must also understand any historic patterns of concentration of segregation of these protected classes and then make meaningful actions to promote integration and equal housing opportunities to all members of the community. This is something that Coachella already does. So documentation of this was mostly just compliance and demonstrating compliance with state law and not necessarily having to go and do too much differently because the city promotes housing opportunities of all types to all persons throughout the community of Coachella. This, just to note, this is a very new component of the housing element. This is something that is brand new for the six cycle. And all cities like Coachella had to work with HCD to really understand exactly what this meant, which is why this had to go through multiple rounds of review. The city worked to address a lot of different topics that were listed here, including the need of housing for special groups, including any concentrations of persons who are unhoused. Analysis showing how the sites inventory really disperses housing opportunities throughout the city and doesn't, it doesn't contribute to any concentration or segregation of any protected classes. So what happens here? The housing element is really a guidebook of actions that the city can take to achieve a variety of goals. The city's implementation plan has seven goals, thirty nine policies and about fifty programs or action items. Each of these programs identify a funding source, a responsible party, whether that's a different department in the city or a collaboration with a, with an outside agency or a nonprofit, as well as the timeline for implementation. So is that something that needs to happen in the next year, in the next three years, the next five years or on a recurring or ongoing basis? Additionally, the city, the city's sites inventory in the housing element is a way to track development and the progress towards the unit and affordability targets that the state has set for the city of Coachella. And then the annual progress report or APR, as the state here, is a annual way for the city to report to the city as well as HCD about the progress that the city's made towards achieving their goals, implementing programs and developing the housing. Next steps. So the city will submit the draft, housing element to HCD for final review. Again, this is the housing element that is before each night. This is on this, available on the city of Coachella's website. And it is the version of the element that had, that staff has discussed with HCD and believes and is confident complies with all housing element law. Pending action tonight, potentially move forward with city council adoption of this amendment to the housing element and then moving forward with compliance. Of course, the, anyone who's interested in any of the discussion that was mentioned tonight, previous versions of the housing element and to just keep up to date, you can go to the housing element update webpage or contact Director Perez. And before we get to any sort of recommendation, I can pause here, share however you want to lead and facilitate any discussion.
So planning commissioner, I don't know if you have any more questions, but I'm available for questions as well as Catherine. It is a big document. That's why, you know, we did reach out to commissioners to see if you wanted briefing. So I appreciate those that took advantage of it. And, but this is, this is a recommendation you would be making to the city council. City council still would need to certify this. Likely they probably wouldn't be meeting on this until September because they do take a break in August.
A comment.
Yeah, thank you so much for the information. Very informative. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Catherine, thank you so much for your presentation. I think you did an excellent job in outlining these main points in this large document. I know and it's gone through extensive edits as well to meet the requirements of the state, right? And I appreciate the staff and also yourself and the team at L W C for preparing this document. I read it, I've reviewed it. I thank you for your time as well earlier this week where we had a nice discussion, a very thoughtful discussion about this document. And I just want to compliment and comment that I think it's solid. I know we have a, a large number to fill within a small timeframe. But my question is, once we get to that point, we are, will our numbers increase again? I mean, I know we went from fifth cycle to sixth cycle. So knowing that the city of Coachella is a certain size, we're not a large city, we're growing to a mid-city per se. What would that look like for us in the seventh cycle since we're already kind of midway, you know, this sixth cycle of the housing element? Can you share a little bit of that?
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your comments. It's quite challenging to say, I believe, from my experience working on housing over the past decade. I've really seen a shift in the state to be very pro-housing. And it seems that everyone's numbers, the six cycle have gone up due to a variety of reasons. And that's poor production over the past cycle across the state as well as a a decision that we understand from the state to be on the supply side to emphasize supply as a way to balance the demand and rising costs. It's very difficult to say what the arena numbers will be in the seventh cycle. There are a lot of factors that go into it and that is Department of Finance and HCD working together to understand population growth and migration and immigration patterns, both in the state and out of the state, as well as to different parts of the city, even if they're moving from city to city. So there may be, there may be shifts, there may be increases in communities throughout the state that have starting to see influx of population. It's just really challenging to say exactly what happens and it depends on, I think, how, how cities throughout the state do this six cycle in encouraging and facilitating housing development.
Thank you. And then could you share with my fellow commissioners what happens after one city council reviews and approves? And then we send it to the state. Can you elaborate a little bit what that look, that review period looks like and how then it might implement and then might come back?
Sure, absolutely. Yes, yes. So if the commission were to move forward with staff's recommendation and then this housing element would go to council at a, at a future meeting, city council would have the opportunity to adopt. And if the council adopted the housing element as is or if revisions or modifications, the element would go back to the state for their certification review. First, it would go, you know, there is a public review period open again right now. That is, that is current. They would go to council for cert, or sorry, HCD for certification. We have been working quite closely with HCD over the past, I mean, over the past two years, but even more extensively, almost on a weekly basis over the past few months. So we may, we may be able to have staff work with HCD to request some modified, modified or expedited review to get an, obtain a certification letter quite quickly. But it is at least it's, it's a sixty day review maximum. Because we've been working so closely, we may, may be able to request an expedited review. And upon certification of the element, the city of Coachella would be in compliance with state housing law and then regain eligibility for a variety of funding and grant programs that do require housing element certification as part of the criteria.
Thank you for that.
What's the median price of a house in Coachella? I was reading the report, I think it was five years ago. It was at two forty five. What, what is the current medium price of, of a house in Coachella? Do you have those numbers or?
It would take me a moment, but I have the numbers that were in the document. We, I'm not sure we've revised them this year, but I could find the, the information that we reported on at the time that that section was drafted.
Yeah, I think they're probably double now. I mean, it's a short period and it's just, it's gone quite, quite a bit. It's gone quite a bit, so. That's another challenge, I think.
Yeah, and Catherine may have additional information, but I'm looking at one of the figures on page.
Forty five, I think that was.
One forty seven of the document. And it just shows one, one number from two thousand and eighteen. There might be enough. But back then, it was the, the median home sales price in Coachella.
That's correct. Two four, two hundred and forty five thousand is what I'm seeing as the, the information we had as a two thousand and eighteen. For a single family home.
We don't have a current number then. Do you have a current number of what the price is or?
On the, not, not in the report. Yeah, I don't know what the current number would be. We'd have to kind of look that up today. But I know it's gone up considerably.
Okay. Any more questions from the commissioners?
No, I just, I really appreciate the strategies that were, you know, put again, Catherine, you and the team and everyone in the staff, the city of Coachella. For providing the strategies of platform and meeting the, you know, meeting state compliance with these, these housing requirements. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine, Catherine so much. A lot of good information. Thank you.
And Jared, if I did a quick search on like internet, like Redfin or something like that, and I'm not sure if we would use that data, but it would, it shows four and sixty thousand, right? So it's gone up considerably.
Okay. Well, the good thing about it is still have the affordable housing. Makes it a fair, you know.
Two hundred and forty five thousand dollar price.
Yeah.
But it's tough, I mean, you look at the income and then you reflect that with a medium houses, it's, you've got to put two or three times to get it to be able to afford that note on it. We've got to do our part and see what we can to offset those numbers. Okay, thank you so much. No questions from the commissioners? Hey, thank you. Moving on to a public hearing calendar.
We did, okay, we closed it. So you're gonna have to call for any motions to approve it?
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it formally opened the public hearing.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's what I thought too. Okay. So have we just opened the public hearing?
Yeah, open the public hearing at six thirty nine.
See if there's any comments from the public.
Any comments on the public? No hands raised?
Without online?
If there's anybody online who'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There are none?
Okay, closing the public comment to six forty. You have a motion on the screening?
Oh, yeah. If you could open up the item to the last slide. Thank, thank you very much. Okay.
Anyone make a motion on the resolution?
Certainly. I'd like to motion to adopt a resolution number PC two zero two three dash twenty one recommending that the city council adopt a negative declaration for the adoption of twenty twenty one dash two zero two nine housing element and approve the general plan amendment number twenty one dash zero two amending the city of Coachella's twenty thirty five general plan for the adoption of the twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty nine housing element.
Thank you, Jason. We have a second on it?
My second.
You got a motion on it?
Yeah, you have the two motions. So real call Commissioner Arvizo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
And I just want to thank Catherine, which has been doing a lot of work with us the last few years. It's been, we've been waiting for this for a long time.
Yeah, just reading the information around, it's pretty extensive. Go ahead.
Hello, planning commission. Thank you for your time today. My name is Adrian Moreno, associate planner with the city of Coachella. And I'll be presenting item number three, El Dorado liquor alcohol sales. So on the presentation, this is CUP number three sixty seven, El Dorado liquor conditional use permit number three sec sixty seven to allow the off sale beer and wine. This is a type twenty ABC license within a one thousand three hundred seventy eight square foot convenience store located at, a proposed convenience store located at four nine six four seven Sesar Chavez Street. And the applicant is Jose Luis Sedano Zamudio. Excellent. And this is the vicinity map, so you can get kind of an idea of where this tenant space is for this proposed convenience store. So you can see there where the site is and it's in red outline. The zoning is CG, general commercial, and this is a one thousand three hundred seventy eight square foot tenant space in the Coachella Shopping Center and the general plan is neighborhood center. Next slide. And a bit of background on this, El Dorado liquor is a proposed convenience store within an existing commercial building located at the Coachella Shopping Center at four nine six four seven Sesar Chavez Street. The tenant space was previously occupied by the Belos Hair Salon, which ended operation in twenty twenty one and section seventeen seventy four point oh one five of the Coachella Municipal Code. Conditional use permits for liquor on sale and off sale require a conditional use permit for all establishments that propose to sell liquor. Next slide. And here you can see the floor plan of the proposed convenience store. The entrance is to your left there on this presentation. And highlighted is where the alcohol will be displayed in the sales floor area. And in the highlighted portions, there is four hundred sixty, forty six point seventy five square feet of the sale area dedicated to this display of alcohol. And per the restrictions in our municipal code, less than five percent of the sale area, so forty eight point six square feet can be dedicated to the display of alcohol. So they are under and do comply with that restriction from. So they are under and do comply with that restriction from the code. Next slide, please. And I went by and took some photos of the site as it looks today. And with the red arrows, you can see the empty, empty tenant space there. And it's right by the indoor swap meet and La Michoacan Paleteria Ice Cream Shop. It's right in between there. And on expansion details, the subject site is located within Census Track nine four oh four with a population of six thousand two hundred forty-two persons, where ABC concentration standards allow a maximum of three off sale licenses where twelve active off sale licenses exist. When it is determined by ABC of an undue concentration of off sale licenses, the planning commission must make findings that the public convenience or necessity justifies the issuance of the liquor license to the establishment. And here I provided a table of the business name, addresses, and license type of all the off sale license, licensees in Census Track nine four oh four. So there's about twelve there, ten of which are in Coachella, the way Census tracks are drawn. It does incorporate some indio sites, so I just highlighted those in red. Those are indio, but there's ten in the Census tract here in Coachella. And just to give you a visual of those ten license, ABC licenses, it would be within that blue highlighted area, that Census Track nine four oh four, and there's ten ABC licenses for off sale alcohol here in this tract. So there is a seven hundred foot distance radius, so off sale establishments, sorry, off sale establishments may not fall within seven hundred feet of a church, school, park, playground, residence, or another existing off sale use as measured from property line to property line, within seven hundred feet of off sale liquor uses Victory Liquor and Sports Goods, which is six hundred seventy-four square or feet away. And there's also Coachella Florist, six hundred seventy feet away. So that, the Victory Liquor and Sports Good and Coachella Florist are within that seven hundred foot distance. And within a two hundred twenty foot distance, there is Coachella Mobile Home Park, because it is within the seven hundred foot distance of residences and off sale, that's why they're restricted to the five percent of sales floor area, right? And I did reach out to Lieutenant Vasquez, and he did not identify any concerns with the business and does not recommend, recommend any conditions of approval. And just so you could get a visual of the seven hundred foot distance requirements from residences and other off sale ABC licenses, I highlighted everything in red that are within that seven hundred foot distance. So up on the north is the Coachella Mobile Home Park. To the west, there are some single family residences. To the south is, in ABC with red, is Coachella Florist, and to the sorry, southeast, there's Victory Liquor and Sports Good, which also holds an ABC license, so those are in red. I also highlighted, because they are in the photo, in green are other off sale liquor license holders, which includes all the way to the east side of this picture is Smart and Final, and to the south, there's Gotti Valdez. So they're not within the seven hundred foot distance, but I included them just to give you a visual, you know, the other ABC license off sale uses in the vicinity. And as for our recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number three sixty-seven with findings and conditions listed in resolution number PC twenty twenty-three dash nine nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. My commission.
Thank you, Adrian. I have a question for you. So let's go back to the five percent maximum sales floor.
Right.
So can you help me understand how is that measured and does the applicant understand that stipulation?
Right, I did talk to them about it when they were revising their site plan. And I did communicate with them, and what we measured, can we go back to that?
Yeah.
Slide with the highlighted areas. So they're gonna have two refrigerators, the wine cooler and beer cooler that you can see highlighted at the top there. And we measured that box of where the coolers would be, and they're about, I believe this is there eighteen square feet, the other eighteen square feet. And to the right, there is a liquor stand that will also have it. So those purple squares around the highlighted areas are what we measured, right? And with those measurements, it is under that five percent of sales floor area.
That is, okay.
Right.
And so we would measure that in, just from respect of the four in terms of square footage, right?
Right.
Then they cannot surpass a certain amount of sales.
Right. Of the sales floor area, so that's everything, right, sorry. Yeah, that'd be everything really to the end of the purple squares there. And then the back would be, you know, staff area, storage area, that wouldn't be included. So it's everything in that sales floor area, customers would go in, it's five percent.
Perfect, thank you for that. And then no further questions.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
So the other liquor store in that vicinity near the Chinese food place shut down, I imagine? It's no longer there?
Yeah, that was Skip's Liquor.
Yeah.
Years ago.
But I don't frequent those establishments, so.
Yeah, they've been gone for many years.
And it's so the lieutenant indicated, I apologize. Thank you. The lieutenant indicated there's no problem, there's no competition with business, because this particular applicant is only selling wine and beer, correct?
Right.
Convenience store, like little liquors, like quick store.
Right.
And then the other store does sell liquor, correct?
The other ABC license holders, are you talking about Victory Liquor?
Yeah.
Right.
Twenty-one. Yeah, there, there are license type twenty-one, and then this would be a twenty, correct?
So twenty-one would include distilled spirits, so it's beer, wine, and distilled spirits.
Yeah.
Can you go back to your site map, because you said liquor, and so when I'm thinking liquor, I'm thinking like spirits?
Right.
Is that, am I wrong in thinking that?
You're, you're correct. If you were to look at this up in the zoning code, the zoning code actually does mix them up. I think of liquor as hard alcohol.
Yeah.
But if you look at the CUP ordinance, it does talk about liquor as applying to all alcohol. Right, so that's where there's probably revision that we should end up doing in the future.
Okay.
But if you were to look up liquor in our code, it also does refer to beer and wine, if it was just beer and wine.
So what is this convenience store where this applicant selling beer, liquor, like everything?
So it'd be beer and wine, right, that's what they applied for.
Okay, so on the site map, if we go back to that diagram where the, where the square footage or this where there's a liquor stand right there.
Right.
It says liquor. So are they gonna sell spirits, liquor, like all hard alcohol, like tequila, rum?
Right, they, that's not what they applied for, so that wouldn't be there, right? It does say liquor, but it should also, it would only be the beer and wine.
Doesn't that go in the category of spirit?
Liquor generally is, talks about beer, wine, and distilled spirits, it's all under liquor in our code.
So beer and wine go under the same category?
As liquor, but, right. What they applied for was the type twenty license, so it would just be beer and wine, so.
Understood.
Be all that's in there.
Okay.
Let's put it on our radar to update that. But no further questions, but thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
So should I read the El Dorado again for a motion or?
Um, yeah, if, if, so one, you would make sure that you open the public hearing, close it.
Okay.
And then after that, take a motion if you're ready to.
Open as a public hearing at six fifty-three. Any hands raised out in the audience?
If anybody on Zoom who'd like to comment, please raise your hand. There are none?
Closing public comment at six fifty-three. So public hearing calendar, item three, El Dorado Liquor. Alcohol sales, conditional use permit numbers, three sixty-seven to allow liquor sales, ABC type twenty, off sale beer and wine within a one thousand three hundred seventy-eight square feet convenience store located within the Coachella Shopping Center at forty-nine six forty-seven Cesar Chavez applicant, Jose Luis Sandano Zamudio.
Question, is applicant here or on the line by any chance?
He is on the line, shouldn't be.
Would he like to say something to the commission or present himself?
In the, Graciela represented.
Open the public hearing again.
The applicant is here, Jose Luis. Oh.
Let me open the public hearing and then open the public hearing on this item at six fifty-four.
Yeah, Jose Luis, this is the opportunity to provide any comments for the commission, if you have any.
Yes, ma'am. Is he muted or?
I asked, Jose, if you'd like to make a comment, if you want to go ahead and unmute.
Perdón, puedes seguir con su sesión, por favor.
Buenas tardes, queríamos saber si quería decirle algo a la comisión, aquí estamos revisando su propuesta, su aplicación, quería decirle algo a la comisión.
Ah, pues nada más dar las gracias por su atención. Mi nombre es Jose Luis Sedano, tengo residiendo aquí en la ciudad de Coachella veintitrés años y espero seguir invirtiendo o haciendo un negocio aquí con mi familia. Gracias.
Gracias.
Gracias, at least, was at least. Okay. May close, are we all done?
No, need for a rotation.
Okay, we're closing the public comment at six fifteen, fifty-six. Moving on to item. Public hearing calendar. Yeah, no, but just reading. So.
Karen, but you haven't made a decision, so you'll have to see if there's a motion.
Yeah, so it's, I'm just saying what the, what the item is. El Dorado Liquor, so we have a motion on the item. I'll go on liquor.
I motion to approve the item that staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number three sixty-seven with the findings and conditions listed in resolution number PC twenty twenty-three dash nineteen.
We have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
You get a roll call.
Commissioner Arvizo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going on the public hearing calendar, number four. Sushi Marisco, Amuchil Alcohol Sales, Conditional Use Permit, number three sixty-six to allow an expansion of alcohol sales as part of a two, two thousand four hundred sixty-three square foot restaurant and ABC type forty-seven, off sale beer, wine, and distilled spirit in an existing commercial building located at forty-nine four zero five Grapefruit Boulevard in the CG General Commercial Zone. Myra Borat, Boroskin. Applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Chair and members of the Plan Commission. This item before you is another conditional use permit related to, this one's for the on sale of alcohol associated with eating place. Now, this restaurant already exists, is operating with an existing beer and wine license. It previously belonged to J C's Burger, that used to be there before. And so the way that conditional use permits work, that, that is, stays with the land. And so anyone that would open the store after that would acquire that ability to have, to sell beer and wine. The, the zone is commercial. This is located within the Gateway Shopping Center, where you might be familiar with Food for Less. And actually really close to the location that Adrian Moreno just presented. So this restaurant, they do sell Mexican seafood. It is a type forty-one license, as I mentioned before, on sale beer and wine. I mentioned J C's Burger was there before, is Maxi, is, is Wendy's, and there's actually a drive-through there. The restaurant owner does not use the drive-through. I've actually seen some cars that are parked in there, so it's not operational. But it was used, I believe, with the Wendy's, not sure about Maxi's, but it was used during, when J C's Burger was there. So as far as the municipal code, why it's a conditional use permit before you, if they're already selling beer and wine, well, whenever they want to augment what they're selling, so in this case, they want to sell distilled spirits in addition to beer and wine, requires them to get a CUP from the planning commission. So this, these are the existing conditions of the business. And they already open. Here's a photo looking north and actually towards where the existing drive-through is. Here's the floor plan, and so this talks, identifies where storage is. And so the display of alcohol is an area that's three by four, which is twelve square feet. So they could actually do something in a larger area, which would be up to twenty-five square feet, so they're well below the threshold in terms of where they can display areas in the, the customer area of the, the restaurant. Here are the list of all the on sale alcohol licenses in the Census tract, so it's actually the same Census tract that Adrian Moreno demonstrated earlier, but here are the license holders for type forty-one and type forty-seven, where it's an Eden establishment. And so you might be familiar with these establishments, all of these are, I believe in Coachelix, or one of them, which is an indio, the tacos, Olivares. But everything else would be city Coachella businesses, so some of them are on sale beer and wine only. Others have on sale beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The same rules apply here, some, seven hundred foot distance from sensitive uses. The restaurant is within seven hundred feet of the Coachella Mobile Home Park. It's located directly south of the shopping center. Cesar Chavez Elementary School is located outside of that range, eight hundred feet away. The restaurant is also within seven hundred feet of existing on sale uses. So Food for Less is on, actually off sales, sorry about that. So that's type twenty-one where they sell alcohol that you can purchase there and take out. Milindo Sinaloa is an Eden establishment. They have a type forty-seven that allows for beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Santa Fe Restaurant, same thing, this went to the planning commission a few months ago. Type forty-seven beer, wine, and they wanted to add distilled spirits. Both of those restaurants are in the same shopping center and close to this restaurant. The last one is Carnitas La Piedad. They have a type forty-one, so just beer and wine. And that's located to this shopping center to the south. I'll show you that on the map right here. So here's a larger vicinity map, and so in red is the Sushi Marisco's Wamuchil. But there is identified there the Santa Fe Restaurant, Milindo Sinaloa Food for Less. The Eastern Buffet is a type forty-one. I put it in red, because it's actually outside the seven hundred foot distance radius. Taco Shop seven sixty, it's also outside the seven hundred feet. And then identified the Mobile Home Park, that's located to the south. And then Carnitas La Piedad is located within that seven hundred feet. Pizza Hut's further south, it's outside the seven hundred foot distance radius. Some operation details for the site, it's, the restaurant is advertised to operate between Monday through Thursday, ten AM to nine PM. And then Friday through Sunday, ten AM to ten PM. Alcohol displayed in that twelve square foot area that identified on the map. And, and so, apologize for the error, it should say Wamuchil Restaurant has seating for nine tables and thirty-six seats. So the recommendation from staff is that the Plan Commission approve the resolution, approving the CUP to allow the addition of distilled spirits for Sushi Marisco's Wamuchil at this location, considering that they already sell beer and wine currently at the site, so they would be adding into distilled spirits. The restaurant also closes before midnight. In the past, there has been concerns by police.
The restaurant also closes uh, before midnight, uh, in the past, there has been concerns by police um, about Milindo Sinaloa and Santa Fe um, selling alcohol, um, also openly hours, so this one would open, would, would close earlier, right, so you wouldn't have this concentration of people spill it out to the parking lot and have concerns that police would have, so um, they're okay with this as long as that they're closing before midnight. That's the end of my staff report, I have to be answering the questions, I believe the applicants um, on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you, good.
I'm a, I'm a little perplexed here because uh, we grant them this license, it's gonna be harder to get a table there. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good.
Well, keep remarks off, sorry. Can we open it for the applicant, can you know, have any questions or anything?
It's the, open of the public hearing, seven oh five. Get over here from the applicant. Oh, he's here. Pásale, pásale.
Mucha, mucho gusto. No, 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 inglés, pero.
Gracias, por favor, también.
¿Cómo se llama?
Yo me llamo Carlos. Ajá, okay, Carlos Zavala.
Francia, está bien.
Primeramente les agradezco por, por todo. Y pues yo soy nuevo en el negocio este, gracias, yo nos, nos ganamos la licencia del técnico. Y pues queremos, yo creo está creciendo, tengo varios proyectos y, y pues me gusta la ciudad, tengo un poco viviendo en ello. Y pues ojalá me dan la oportunidad de seguir adelante. Y sería todo, muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, gracias.
Okay, do we have, we have a motion on Chumarisco, Amuchí, now cross sales?
And I don't think we both.
You're gonna read it all? Read the whole thing, Gabriel?
Um, yeah, sorry, let me close the public comment. Yeah, you need to close the public.
Let me uh, close the public comment at uh, seven oh six. And the public hearing calendar, item four.
And, and then just take a motion to either approve or consider item?
Sushi uh, Marisco, Wamuchí. Close sales, there's a motion on it.
Show motion to uh, approve the expansion of alcohol sales as part of the or, oh, to adopt resolution number P C twenty twenty three dash twenty, approving conditional use permit number three sixty six to allow a liquor cell license type forty seven on sale beer and wine and distilled spirits at the Sushi Marisco Wamuchí Eating Establishment located at four nine, four zero five Grapefruit Boulevard pursuant to the findings and conditions of approval.
You have a second on the resolution number P C twenty three dash twenty?
I'll second the motion.
You have a roll call?
Commissioner Arvizo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Felicidades. Éxito.
Okay, going on to um, item um, number five, Director Development update.
Um, not much updates here, just wanted to uh, welcome Chair Gonzalez back and uh, really good to have you, we missed you while you were out.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate it.
You helped me.
Really appreciate it, gracias.
So I, um, but uh, in addition to that, I just want to mention, the city did receive a two million dollar grant uh, from the state, is actually was awarded to R C T C, but we uh, R C T C is the Riverside County Transportation Commission, so we worked with them on the grant uh, to uh, it's a, a grant to do a rail station feasibility study, determine what's the best site for a future rail station. Might be aware that there's a service that R C T C is studying that would connect uh, Alleghen Station, go through Orange County and to Riverside Redlands, and then out to Coachella Valley. And so this would be a terminus point for that service. Um, and so it's pretty exciting news, we used to have a rail station that was built in nineteen oh three. It's no longer there anymore, used to exist at the end of Fifth Street, where it ended at Grapefruit Boulevard. Um, but uh, you know, it's time, the city's gonna grow significantly over the next few years. Uh, but this grant will allow us to plan for that. So the idea is, once we determine what the best place is, we'll also develop the land use plan around that station, right, so the city really wants to focus development around that station to make it successful, to allow people to be able to, uh, so they could, if they work in Riverside, they can go to Riverside or Los Angeles, whatever it is. And the same thing here, someone wants to work in Coachella and come from another city and, and take the train. So that's really exciting, that means the planning commission will also be involved in this process. It should probably kick off this fall, because we'll have to select a consultant by September, so really exciting news.
Good job, awesome work, Steph. So we've uh, we've identified a couple of locations or?
We don't, well, the way it's worked out right now, we'll probably look at three. Somewhere in the north, somewhere in the middle, somewhere on the south, and the city, but all, obviously along the railroad. Um, so I'm not sure what it means for feasibility. Like, uh, is there big enough area for the rail station, is there parking, do we have site control? Uh, you know, we only, that, right now, we only have site control over two parcels that's near the industrial park right now. Uh, so that will factor into, what's this rail station gonna look like? Does it can be a small little station like the one, the Palm Springs right now? Is it gonna be something elaborate? It's gonna be the opportunity for us to really envision what it should be.
All right, good job.
Yeah, congratulations to staff.
Yeah, awesome work.
Gives us an opportunity to tap into our roots.
I think originally it was in the center, wasn't it, it was in, on the east side or, or the north side? Was it a more central location?
Yeah, so where Fifth Street is right now in downtown, right, so Fifth Street ends at Grapefruit Boulevard, but in the past, there you actually used to extend further across the railroad. And the city still owns that easement right there in the past, so right south of where that easement is, there used to be the rail station there, so it served freight and it served, it served passenger travel, so there used to be a sign on the rail station, I could provide to the planning commission that said uh, had, whatever the distance is to San Francisco, said, hey, you know, it's a thousand miles to San Francisco. And then, and then the other part of the sign said the distance from here to uh, New Orleans, right, so that means you can connect.
Actually, it crossed over one eleven and went into the, we're gonna do that little park that you used to drop stuff, variety, elephant poles and and the transformers and stuff, but the, that rail station actually crossed one eleven and went to, in front of the pay station and into that location, and I started moving.
Like the rail spur, huh?
Yeah, we're back in, into them.
Yeah.
That was a long time ago.
Thanks. That's fun.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? We're all done, I think, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, you can motion to adjourn or you can adjourn us.
I have one other comment, we have a, we're not meeting in August, correct? That's one of the other things.
Yes, so our next meeting will likely be, looks like we have items that are, that we and are anticipating would be in September, so the next meeting would be September sixth.
Yeah, we moved some things over to September, I believe.
Yeah.
Specifically our cell towers.
Yeah.
Yes, that's on the agenda, there we go.
He's ready. Jason's ready to rock it on that one. Okay, it's uh, seven thirteen, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.